Lake Mills City Council for July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quaidnow?
Here.
Mr. Koots?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have correction and acceptance of the city council meeting minutes from July first last meeting. Are there any comments or corrections? Okay, seeing none, we will accept those into our record. Next item is board and committee reports. We don't have any minutes to review or discuss. Are there any reports that any council members wish to make? Okay.
I would like to make a report. The parks board met last night and we completed our deliverable to propose our recommendations for Sandy Beach Recreation Activities, and so that will be on the agenda in April on time.
Nice job. In August, I think.
Excuse me, in August. Thank you.
Yes, perfect. So that'll be right at this time on the, at this point on the agenda that I'll be able to present that. Thank you. Anything else from boards or committees? Okay, next is correspondence and constituent contacts. Michelle, would you like to kick it off?
Um, sure. I had a couple of phone calls regarding Sandy Beach, a couple of emails from Sandy Beach, and then I got an email regarding the garden tour on July nineteenth.
Fantastic. Greg?
I also had concerns about traffic on Main Street and Tyrena Park Road and an awareness issue of trucks parked on Main Street in Milton, construction trucks parked in the bike lane. There's no parking in that area.
Okay, thanks. Mary?
In addition, I had correspondence on the Century Building and specifically Sandy Beach Restaurant and Mobile Home Park Topics, and one additional on Pickleball Courts.
Great. Greg Koots?
Just an email on the Sandy Beach Trailer Park.
Okay, thanks. I also had one email on Sandy Beach Mobile Homes, one on the restaurant. I got an email about a rotary park hazard, which was, I was just copied on something to staff. I think we all got the email on Main Street and Tyrena Road through, I guess there's a new, new way for people to contact us using the website, and then it goes to all council members. Is that right, Drake?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, and I forwarded that to our public.
I don't think I got that one.
Oh, you didn't get it? Okay, maybe.
Since you're new on council.
Can check, check that out, make sure that he's on that list, yeah.
I'll take a look.
Yeah, so it comes in, looks a little different. It doesn't look like it's coming from that constituent, but through the city website. So I forwarded that to Randy, and he's already followed up. And then I got one inquiry about the new smoke shop. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Individuals who have registered to speak are invited to address the council at this time. State your name and address when you are called on to make your comments. No action will be taken for items that are not listed on the agenda, and each speaker is really, is limited to three minutes. We do have a public hearing this evening, so if you are wanting to comment regarding the Jefferson County Hazard Mitigation Plan, we have a public hearing for that, and you can hold your comments till that time. So I have one person, Robin Unz, who had signed up to speak about the library, so I'm not sure, I don't see Robin online.
Or in person?
Misty, yes, or in person? Okay, well, we'll try to catch her, try to catch her after the other folks comment. So next person is JB Clark, who is registered to speak on traffic calming.
Hello again. JB Clark of one-two-two Milton Street. Economics, the study of how people and societies allocate scarce resources that have alternative uses. Scarcous resources such as city funds, alternative uses such as traffic calming measures on Milton Street versus Mulberry Street. Mulberry Street has been repeatedly cited as a potentially higher priority. At the June seventeenth meeting, our police chief talked about higher rates of speeding there. If speeding alone were the only issue on Milton Street, that might be a valid objection. At the July first meeting, city council member Greg Koots shared that a resident on Mulberry Street believes that they need traffic calming features more than Milton Street. So how do we decide between these alternative uses? We collect data. This is a two-part report. The first is a new petition from Milton Street. It documents patterns of hazardous driving behaviors, not just speeding, and calls for three specific traffic calming measures, the same three that I outlined in my speech at the last city council meeting. This petition is signed by every household on Milton Street. Second, a survey of Mulberry Street. I went door-to-door, asking whether employers and residents there feel that traffic calming measures are necessary. Out of respondents at thirty-four addresses, thirteen said yes, seventeen said no, four were undecided. That's thirty-eight percent in support, fifty percent opposed, and twelve percent unsure. Respondents from both streets also volunteered whether their address includes children under the age of twelve and seniors sixty-five or over. The difference is striking. Only forty-three percent of the Mulberry respondents report a vulnerable road user, compared to eighty-nine percent on Milton Street. Council members have said, "We need objective criteria for decisions. That data is the only way forward." This report showcases compelling, objective criteria. Appendix A and Appendix B have your data. If we cannot afford traffic calming everywhere, it is most prudent to start where nine out of ten households include vulnerable road users, and where one hundred percent of the households are officially notifying you of potentially lethal hazards and petitioning you for traffic calming measures as a result. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person registered to speak is Anita Martin, regarding wastewater aeration, I think?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Anita Martin. We live at two-sixty-one Pinnacle in our Lake Mills community. We've seen for ourselves over the past several days, what happens in Canada does not stay in Canada. For many years, we've also seen for ourselves, what happens on Crossman Road does not stay on Crossman Road. A few years ago, Daybreak Foods, Creekwood Farm approached, sorry, approached city staff about the possibility of bringing their wastewater here to our wastewater treatment plant. The city determined our wastewater operation could not add Daybreak's wastewater stream to its wastewater stream. Daybreak Foods' five-year DNR wastewater permit is up for reissuance. The corporation now plans to take the wastewater from its three wastewater ponds and apply it to fields in the town of Lake Mills and the town of Astelan. One method they propose using involves applying it from twenty to thirty feet in the air using spray equipment under pressure. The health risks from this aeration spray may include MRSA, E. coli, and more than a hundred and fifty other potential pathogens, possibly blue-green algae, or more correctly called cyanobacteria as well. One newer study indicates that aeration of algae toxins could impact residential areas within ten miles, even under a relatively small wind factor of four to seven miles per hour, and that research was in the Florida area. How far the early, sorry, how far the airborne particles will travel in our area depends on many factors: wind speed, humidity, topography, et cetera. The DNR expects to release the proposed five-year wastewater permit for public comment in the near future. Now is the time to request a public hearing in person regarding the facility's proposed plans. The contact person at the DNR is Eric Struck. We've seen for ourselves, what happens on Crossman Road does not stay on Crossman Road. Isn't it time for Daybreak Foods, one of our nation's top-three egg producers, to invest in its own wastewater treatment plant in Lake Mills? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I don't, still don't see Robin. So with that, we will close public comment. Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is the city manager report, and we have all of our monthly financials and several other reports attached to the agenda this evening. Drake, is there anything you want to highlight for us?
One thing I'll highlight that's not in the written report is we're anticipating notices of reassessments beginning to be mailed out July twenty-third. So we're working on putting together some information to put out to people, updating that section on our website, and hopefully getting some social media posts out. It's just a reminder that changes in assessment do not directly translate to changes in what a personal property tax bill may be. That is only calculated after every taxing jurisdiction has decided how much they're going to levy, as well as how much a property's tax value increases in relation to the rest of the community's increase. So properties that increase more than the average will, may see an increase. Those who increase less than average may see a decrease. Some may not see a decrease attributable to it at all, depending on what the levies are. But it's all, in layman's terms, it's all how, what size piece of the overall tax pie is attributable to the property that a resident or business owner owns within the city. So we'll be putting out information on that, but that'll be, that will complete one significant portion of the revaluation, and of course, then open book will be in September, followed by.
Open book's August.
August, followed by Board of Review in September. So if, when residents receive that notice of reassessment, if they have questions, we'd urge them to contact the assessor. There will be office hours set up, and they can also contact them by phone or email outside of that, and that information's available on our website. And then ultimately, they also have the right to come to the Board of Review with adequate notice, provided that they intend to challenge their assessment.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on any of the other reports that are provided? Greg Waters?
Thank you. Question for staff or maybe the chief, it's regarding the fire department report. I noticed that there was a, a daytime response resignation, so it brings that number down from three to two, and I just was wondering what, what the impact may be with, with that number coming down.
Chief, do you want to speak to it?
Chief, Russ is here. You want to come to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, so any of the daytime responses, obviously, the current model that the city uses with allowing streets workers to be part of the response program is a great help. Obviously, that number has fluctuated over the years. Currently, Kyle Zabel and Wayne Dunn are the two that are on the department, that are both either on parks or on city streets. So it does cut us down. Currently, with Joel and I there during the daytime response, that'll still give us a response of four, which is normally referred to as an engine company. Joel and I normally handle, handle the ambulance during the day on secondary calls when Ryan Brothers is out, so that gives us two ambulances still in the community. How much will it hurt? It'll, we'll lose the one extra person, but we've still been seeing a pretty good response through, from our POC membership as well. So I'd like to see another person or two get on one of the streets or parks departments, but that's kind of a thing that comes and goes and ebbs and flows, so. Not really the, the answer, I, what you're, you're, might be looking for, but I, I hope it, you know, we stay consistent with the two that we have. Both of them have been pretty good about responding and when to respond and things like that, so.
Great. Appreciate your insight. Thank you.
Yeah.
And chief, before you step down, I wanted to add a couple of comments as well. First of all, thank you for the, the additional detail in the report beyond the data that we usually see. And I forgot to report in our constituent context that I attended the Town of Lake Mills meeting last week remotely, and you gave a presentation there, and I was thinking, oh, that's really good information. That's good to know. And so I'm glad to see that we have that in our report as well. And I also, so I wanted to thank you for the service that you're doing to the, you know, the, the other communities in the fire district and keeping the lines of communication going there. I also received a call from the chair from the Town of Oakland, very complimentary of the support from Ryan Brothers and the city, and obviously, there's been activity in the Town of Oakland the last few months since we've had that IGA. So she expressed her appreciation and felt that things are going very well for their community with the service being provided by Ryan Brothers and the Lake Mills Fire Department. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the reports that we have? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to council business. Our first item is a presentation and library board request regarding the LD Fargo Library Expansion. And I know we have our library director, Gerard, is online. Unfortunately, he's ill, so hopefully you can hang in there for this, Gerard. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Gerard from the library. I'll share my screen here in a second. That come through?
Yes.
Okay, let me go into the slideshow mode. Darkness thing. So Ms. Quaidnow and I are, work together on this because she is also on the library board. And Michelle, if you was, want to go first?
Sure, I can go first. First of all, I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak with you today. It's a little weird speaking as a presenter from this point of view, but I, I appreciate you willing to see that. We hope that presentation helps with clarifying any questions you might have, along with the materials that you've received in your packet. Get our next slide, Gerard?
Yeah, just tech issues. So the library's been around since nineteen oh-two. It was multiple years in the making, and it was named after the main benefactor, who was Lawrence of Dow Fargo, prominent citizen who had the dough to give it. And one of the main reasons he was given for the library was as gathering place for people within the community. I mean, specifically, he saw it as being a place for the different women's groups. And I've probably mentioned before to the council that if you look across the Midwest, the history of most every public library, it seems like, was started by a women's group who recognized the need for library services and acted upon that. And something that we're really proud of at the library, and the building itself is significant. It's, it's architecturally unique. When I'm working there at the front desk, we often have people coming in just because they saw the building on the outside, and they had to come in to see the beautiful library. And it's great on the outside, but it's too small on the inside. And some more history, built in nineteen oh-two, expanded in nineteen sixty-five to the north with a one-story addition. Fire in January of nineteen eighty burned all, as you can see from that image, all of that nineteen oh-two section from the bottom to the top. The rebuilding work took over a calendar year. I think they had a grand reopening like in May. And then in twenty thirteen, we had a remodel, not a remodel in. And before twenty thirteen, we knew the building was too small. Before I started here twenty years ago, it was recognized that the building was too small, and there was work to get to start an expansion. It kind of didn't get too far. And a twenty thirteen remodel got us some improvements, but it didn't give us any extra space.
I'm going to add to that. The reconstruction of the nineteen eighty fire, the cost was four hundred and seventy thousand, or four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, of which three hundred thousand of that was from insurance, and an additional sixty-two thousand was from donations from the public, and then benefactors filled in the rest. If we were to have remodeled that at our current rates, it would be one point nine million dollars.
And that spindly little tree is still there. It's just a lot bigger, front and center. I'm sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
Sure. As you know, we are a growing population and a growing community. I did some research, and according to a couple of resources, from nineteen eighty to twenty-ten, our population grew fifty-five percent. That, that's crazy. And in the last few years, it grew two percent or so, I think it was one point seven-seven, which approximates to about a hundred and twenty-eight people per year. So people are recognizing this is a place where you need to be, and I think that our services need to reflect that.
Yeah, if anybody who's lived here for time knows that a lot of people, that most of the community recognize what a nice city this is that we live in, and that's a very desirable place to live. And in turn, they also know that the library is a really great resource. I mean, we do surveys as often as we can, money and time allowing. The last survey we did on library services was finished in twenty-twenty-two, after COVID, when there was still concern about the economy and costs, and over seventy percent of the people still said they would fully or likely support an expansion.
Which was further reflected in the, in the.
The referendum.
Thank you. I was failing to remember the word. As far as space constraints, I mean, this is, we're kind of, probably sound like a, a never-ending record here, but the reality is, is that this building hasn't really expanded for more than, almost a century. And I think it's important that we acknowledge that space does impact whether or not services are provided, especially with regard to child services and meeting the needs of the community as far as even the elderly and, and those who need help with computers or getting a job or anything like that. We just simply do not have the space for the things that this community needs. As far as the goals and phases of the project, you have all been aware of how long and tiresome this goal, this process has been. And so I, I think it's important that we acknowledge that, Gerard, when did we start this whole thing? Was it twenty?
We really started in earnest in about twenty nineteen.
Yeah, so it's been, it's been a hot minute, okay? It's been a long enough, and almost as long as I feel like we've been dealing with Sandy Beach. So I think it's important that we, that we focus on that. And then Gerard, did you want to talk about the feasibility study, or are we good with that?
Well, the first step in the process was hiring an architecture firm to assist us, and the first step in working with them was doing a feasibility study of the building. Because the library board and staff and most of the customer base could say, yes, we're too small, we need to be bigger. But the architecture firm would go ahead and look at the library building and all the comparable-sized communities and the Wisconsin library standards to see where we would fit in there. And in all those, we're just too small, not for our service base, which is the city of Lake Mills and the surrounding communities. It's about ten thousand people. And feasibility study showed that, that we were, we're moving forward from that to, to get bigger. See if I can get this to advance. Oops, go back again. Okay.
Okay, so you all have a copy of the timeline, right? Okay, go ahead, Gerard.
So, uh, we've been too small for a long time. I mean, the last expansion was nineteen sixty-five, so, I mean, really, as Michelle said, really a hundred years since, over a hundred years since the building was built, and then really just a minor expansion to the north in sixty-five. And we've been too small for a while now. And my predecessor had been working on forming a capital fundraising committee. That was in two thousand and one, two thousand and two, didn't quite go that far. It would still needed to be done. And when I got here, about two thousand and five, it was recognized, and we were kind of waiting and looking and waiting and looking, and decided to go ahead and do a renovation in twenty thirteen, which would not expand the overall space, would better use what we had, and also refresh everything that was really kind of wearing out since the nineteen eighty remodel. And so that was kind of a make-do. It got us through for a little bit of time, but like I said, it didn't expand the space at all. And since twenty nineteen, we've really been working more on doing the actual expansion. This just kind of points out some of those steps that we've taken.
You can go to the next slide there.
And I got a, I'm looking at my notes at the same time on this other monitor. So current reality is, I say it over and over and over again, is that we're too small. But at the same time, over on the left-hand side for overcrowding, this is not based on just a feeling that we got, or we think we're too small, or we, we say we need a new car just because we're too small. But at the same time, versus our peer libraries, we do a lot. The staff does a lot of work, and they've been very successful, what they do. We have more library cards, but we're eight percent smaller. We have greater operating hours in other libraries, our size, the community size, we have higher circulation, and we do all that with a smaller collection size, too. We just don't have the shelf space to grow at all. It's pretty much every book we add, we have to take one out.
And if you're looking at the programming numbers, there is two hundred and seventy-three programs that were run in twenty-twenty-four, with an attendance of close to five thousand people. And through conversation with Gerard, we identified that there were many more possibilities for programs, but unfortunately, we don't have the space or the staff to be able to do that. And you'll see in further slides that there were situations where even people had to be turned away because there was a cap on how many people could be in a certain space.
That was two weeks ago, it happened again.
So then when it comes to, go ahead.
Yeah, so insufficient accommodations, not to, to step on what you're saying, Michelle, but you brought that up two weeks ago. We no longer have our larger children's events in the library because we can't fit everybody. The room capacity is ninety-nine. And so during the summer programs, when we get a lot of people in the building, we end up going over to Wallace Park. But if the weather's bad, we have the library as a backup, but when there's a backup, that means we have to limit attendance, and we were turning people away at the door for the program. We just didn't have enough room.
In fact, there's a magician tomorrow at Wallace Park. And it's at Wallace Park because it's, it gets such a good amount of kids, but they can't do it in the library. So I would also like to speak to the fact that there is a lot of, a lack of meeting spaces, which I know based on working with the, with the school district, that was something that they had mentioned would be really, really helpful for, for tutoring sessions or having meetings with kids who can't maybe come to school than we have, unfortunately, that situation. There's, there's times when students are not allowed in buildings, but we're still, they're still our student. And so we don't have the facilities in, in the library, which is typically where things like that are held in our current library setup, as well as there's no family spaces. And what that means is mostly getting back to, yes, there's the kids' space in the basement, but there's no space there for a mother who's breastfeeding, for example. And, and in our new, the new setup, there is one, so.
Yeah, during the renovation in twenty thirteen, one of the big improvements we made was a restroom down the lower level. And if anybody was using the bathroom or needed to use the bathroom, and they were in a family before, they would bring, they, you'd have a mom or a dad there, if like, one to three kids, they'd have to take the child who needed to go to the bathroom, and all of them would have to trade, saw the way upstairs. child who needed to go to the bathroom, and all of them would have to trade all the way upstairs and go to the restrooms upstairs and then right back down to the the library section. And nobody wants to do that. There's a lot to be said about having programs off-site, kind of taking the library to people. But an important part of the library is having people come in and use our collection. And they're not doing that if they only go to Wallace Park and come over. Uh you want to have them all in the same building to be able to use all our resources. Um I'm a little off track here. Uh s- study space, so I was gone on vacation last week. Been out the past two days, and I still had four requests to use our study room and study spaces. Um and we get them from everywhere. We had somebody contacting us because they needed to do like an assessment for English, second language. We had one for uh uh Wisconsin Bureau of Refugees needed needed a spot. There was this local business group that needed a meeting space. We have people coming in who want to do Zoom meetings for work or for school, or they're studying, or they're working, or the middle school or high school students need to come in and do gaming, or they have a group project and they're doing their homework together. And we just don't have any space for it. And the new building would accommodate hopefully all of that, at least most of it, with uh individual study rooms. This was smaller group rooms from, usually those are about four-people rooms, uh have a larger room, about eighty-eight, uh eighty-eight.
Let's go to the next slide so they can see it.
Okay, yeah.
You're getting ahead of us, man.
I'm getting ahead, go ahead.
All right, so the current basement, if you've ever been in the basement, it is a it's a lower level uh below the ground. Um low ceilings. Uh there is a bathroom down there, thankfully, because I know that there are many children who wouldn't make it up the stairs if they were uh needing to go up the stairs and the elevator's not quite fast enough, so. Um but one thing I want to note here is that there isn't any natural light. Um natural light is uh has been shown to be extremely beneficial, especially with this generation of kids whose faces are all in technology. They need to get outside. Um and having some kind of vitamin D coming into them in in a place where they feel safe is even more important. Um what I mean by blind spots is that if if you've been down in that area of the library, um there aren't a lot of places where kids can hide, which is really cool for them, but not cool for parents. Um and I think in the the remodel, the way it's set up, there's a lot more open um sightlines and easier for parents to keep track of where their kids are. You can go to the next one. Go ahead.
So the first floor, uh these layouts that we're showing you are all from the twenty thirteen remodel. These are all done by the designer at the time. And there's a lot, a very limited seating. There's some in the upper right kind of quadrant there and off to the far left. That's about it. There's there's not really any casual seating area. And there's no meeting space outside of those three rectangles on the far left, those in the meeting tables there. I'm sorry, not meeting tables, study tables.
There's no privacy there either.
There's yeah, there's no privacy. If you need to do any kind of uh a Zoom conference call, phone call, you're not gonna have it there. Even if you step outside, you're not really gonna have any privacy because the noise is coming in through the windows, too. Um there's no private study space, uh there's no conference rooms. Uh the young adult space is kind of top center there. And in this twenty, this designer revision, it actually looks more roomier than it is. It's it's very tight in there. It's had to gradually kind of expand outward. And there's been times when it it just gets too full. Uh there's a few years ago when it it kind of ebbs and flows how often and how many kids we have coming in, just depending on who's in the middle school. But one year, we had, we would have like twenty kids coming over from the middle school, and they would not fit in there, and they would just find space wherever they could. Where they would go to the end of the library stacks and just hang out there. Then I have to go and pull their candy wrappers where they hit them out from behind the books. And there's just no room. Uh we want people to come and use the library, but if you come in and there's no place to sit, I mean, you're gonna turn and walk out again.
So the second floor, we've we've kind of talked a little bit about, and then there's going to be a picture later on that shows you um how how packed that room can be with only ninety people in it. Um it can become standing room only, which is probably a fire hazard, and I'm not saying that in front of the chief of the fire department. Nope, I'm not. Um but the point is, is that there is a lot of things that could be used um meeting space and adults programming and children's program, but but this is the only space that's available, and it's often overbooked. Um in fact, in the last bullet point, it does say it's booked so often, people have to be turned away. Um a thousand square feet for that kind of environment where there's not even any partitions to be put up to to maybe divvy up those spaces doesn't provide a lot of opportunities for other programming. You can go to the next one, Gerard.
So vision for expansion, this just the image didn't come out very good, and we blew it up to the slide, but if you look around that blue dotted line, that's all the existing building. And everything to the left of that, in the center, would be the proposed expansion, one-story expansion. And then further to the far left would be parking. And we'd be doubling in size, a little more than doubling in size, really. And uh at least half of that would be going to children's services, and in the bottom in that center third, in the lower left of that, would be a new meeting room, which would be it fit a lot more people.
Um one thing that I didn't mention before, but I had it in my notes and I failed to remember. Um I know that there was a community feedback survey um having to do with what they would have preferred of of one-floor or a two-floor option. With the way that the two-floor option was budgeted, it was way over our ability to help. Um even as city council or as as the public, it was just, it was thirteen million, is that right, Gerard?
Yeah, yeah, it got expensive really fast.
Right, and we recognize that there's going to be inflation of of costs in general. Um and so we went to FEH and said, hey, we can't afford this, what can you do for us? They gave us the one-story plan, which is nice because we get more square footage. So as you can see, it almost doubles, or maybe even um doubles the amount of space that is in the current building space. Uh and the nu- the other nice thing is that it does not prevent for future um expansion. So if we wanted to um add a second floor at another time, putting one-floor uh expansion right now sets us up for that ability. So if you go to the next slide. So here's the new addition. Um with, as Gerard mentioned, there's over fifty percent of additional space is devoted to children. Um as well as a mother's room, which, as I mentioned, is the place where mothers can go and change the kids' diapers, take care of um baby needs, anything like that. Um there are more play and create areas increased, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that means. Um a lot better and safer area for littles. Um and it's easy access to the bathroom. So if you look in the picture, the upper left-hand area is what's considered right now to be the place where there would be play and creative spots. Underneath that, in what looks like jumbled, is uh bathrooms. Um and there's more than one there. I think there's four or three.
Uh there's three. Two larger ones would uh basically serve the meeting room and the rest of the library.
Right, and so we're not limiting the people who are in the library to just one bathroom. Um and because there's gonna be multiple kids who need to go to the bathroom, and it's good to have that. The other piece of that is that this is not necessarily set in stone. So right now, you see the collection that's over on the right-hand side and the upper right-hand side. This is interchangeable. This is, you know, um working with Becca, she's very open and um and willing to consider doing multiple setups. So don't think that this is how it will be. This is a picture of what it could be. Um the the collection piece down below in the bottom right-hand side um is, again, increased circulation, uh which is more books. For um a couple of things, we get most of our money from book. Uh if you if you rent or if you borrow a book, that's where some of the money comes from. And then it it increases our circulation, so there's interlibrary loan that helps with that. The meeting space that you see down in the bottom left-hand corner is significantly larger than what it we have currently. Um and it also has a partition in it so that there is an option there for um where it can be blocked off and just used for children's programming in a way that's safe and keeps them away from the door. Is there anything you wanted to add to that, Gerard?
Uh just a couple of points. Uh I got to thinking about that mother's room is, if you think about when you bring your kids somewhere, one of them is just having a meltdown. Uh wh- wh- what do you do? And mother's room is an option to go in and kind of quiet them down without packing everybody up and leaving, screwing up your plans for the day. Uh the children's services needs a dedicated programming space. And the plan we had before built that in. And my expectation of this would stay pretty much what it is, is about half that room would be spent almost all the time for children's programming. We'd have that divider up, and the other room would be available, and then we'd break it down whenever we would have a big event that we had to had to host. Uh but it, a lot of benefits come with having a dedicated programming space. And first floor entrance, again, this is a little blurry, but this is the existing nineteen oh-two section with wow, it appears now in the current plans. And as Michelle said, these are always gonna change and get shifted around. But one of the benefits of having a larger building is you get all the children on on one end and all the adults on the other. And so all the noise and uh just hecticness could be going over on one side, and anybody who's over there and and does not wanna they've had enough children for the dead, they just want to do their adult thing, they could do it over there. They can sit, they could read, they could study, they could have a meeting. And uh this also includes meeting space in the graphic there, the floor plan in the lower right, the floor for person meeting room. There's some study tables just above that. And towards the top center of that diagram is uh the existing fireplace.
Um as far as the circulation and teen spaces, you can see in the middle there, which is literally in the middle of the entire um uh the library as it as it would be, um provides easy access from all locations. Um and not only that, but the current teen area would basically double um in size, which provides three additional, um well, additional meaning that they weren't even there in the first place. Three rooms for studying or or group work or even playing games. I know that there's a lot of kids that play D and D, and that would be a good place to do it. Um and then there's the comfy chairs and and uh more of that natural lighting. Uh behind the circulation desk is the work area for our our the staff in general. It's still there. Um but it's out, it's it's away from where they're currently in circulation, so this would make it a lot easier for people to um who work in the library to be able to access those rooms. Um and then there's two bathrooms down there as well. So there's middles uh of the way. You don't have to go all the way to the back of the building for the bathrooms. There's middle bathrooms.
And something to keep in mind is when we talk about some of these services that we have, people they they say, well, you should just be going there and reading. You should pick up a book, some leave. Uh that's that's not what a library is. I mean, it's part of what it is. But we want people to come in and use the facility, and a lot of that is having it available for a place for kids, and you get that middle the middle grade and the teenagers, who are never really welcome anywhere. And we want them to be able to come in there and use the facility. Um I've I've said it before, that the library is the one building in the community where you can just come in and sit down and do nothing. Nothing is expected of you. You don't have to buy anything, you know, but do anything, but we have people come in and just sit and read their phones, or they read a book. Uh so we're talking about we're gonna be spending this money, what are we gonna get out of it, and is it gonna be a benefit, and where are we getting our money's worth? And a lot of improvements here. Uh left-hand column, infant toddler and elementary is something we've really been working on. The the two focus the two goals we've had are improving and expanding children's services and having meeting space available. And we would definitely do that with this plan. Well, with any of the plans, we focused on that. And dramatically increase the square footage for the children's area. Have all those different spaces that were mentioned before, create a play space for uh toddlers and above, increase programming. Uh I think that's discussed in this slide.
Hey Gerard, thanks for putting my daughter's picture. That at least validates that she went to the library once in her lifetime, so.
Yes. Oh, I I did that on purpose. I I saw her in there and I thought, hey, this is relatable. Uh and 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 to go on to that, I mean, talking about the teens, uh uh Michelle will talk about that, but teens are so tough to reach. Uh Brianna, the teen services hu- holds events all the time, but it's this this age range roughly from sixth to twelfth grade, and you have these dramatic differences between grades. And you know, a twelfth grader is not gonna hang out with a sixth grader. And it's difficult to get people in, and so we try to have all sorts of different programs that will reach people. And this was an example of one, I think this was soap making. That was a few years ago, and it just, it brought people in, and they came in and they use the library, and then we want it's the idea, they're coming in, they haven't been in since they were in fourth grade, they come back in, then we want them to keep calling in. I'm sorry, Michelle, go ahead.
No, you're fine. The uh and I I I said this before, the increase of the square footage actually is three hundred percent uh not two hundred. So that I think is really important because it's it's, we're emphasizing the uh programming for infant toddler, elementary and teens, so basically from zero to eighteen. But we also want to note that uh that the adults, like Gerard had mentioned before, that ad- adults have a space, right? The and and their space is quieter than maybe the children's space, because right now, if you go to the library, um it's it's it can be chaotic. There's a lot of a lot of uh different age groups in there. There's people sitting at computers trying to do some studying, and a family of four comes in, and their kids are all excited about getting to the library and all that, and it's it's chaotic. Where if we have these places set up like this, and right now in the current building, we just don't have that. Um it would provide the kinds of things that every generation would benefit from. And I want to point out that that picture in the uh slide presentation underneath adults, that was a recital. And it was
No, that was a Badger Talk.
No, that was, you're right, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry, I kept thinking it was recital. Go ahead, it was what?
Uh a Badger Talk, somebody from UW Madison came over, did a lecture. And we usually have about one, maybe two of those a year, and as you look in the far back room there, it was standing room only. We we ran out of chairs. And that's the kind of thing that we're limited by now. Is if we want to have a speaker like that come in, I'm reluctant to spend the cost or organize something like that, we constantly have to turn people away just because we don't have enough room.
Gerard, uh Greg asked if we have wheelchair access. I would like to say yes, because we have the elevator, but
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, but it's not perfect, and ADA is changing to give people even more room when they need it. The elevator we have is from nineteen eighty, and it's not big enough to fit a uh just a stretcher. So if there was an issue, uh Chief Jason would have to traipse upstairs with a stretcher. I don't know what you got, and and haul everybody down, just isn't gonna fit in the elevator. Um and it's not really all that maneuverable there, and a new building would be. Uh I believe you, do you, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, let me go on. Um I if 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 I keep going, I'll keep going and just leave here.
All right, so um the community, we, you know, we can't climb this mountain, the library can't climb this mountain alone. And I think it was mentioned in a previous slide where the 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 library's never really asked for a lot of money from the city. Um most of whatever renovations that had to be done were done with whatever funds they had or some slight fundraising. Now is the time when we're looking at, we, the library really needs to grow with the city in which it supports, as well as the surrounding municipalities. We know that fifty-five percent of our voters voted in favor of the expansion. We know that fifty-five percent of our voters voted in favor of the expansion. So if we have any, as, as a, um, some, a public commenter said earlier, if we use data, the data says that this is what the community wants. Um, and that there, you know, the one hundred extraordinary women, which is by the way, more than a hundred women. Um, and I have family who has participated in that, so I feel very strongly about this. The, um, have raised over two hundred thousand dollars so far and there's going to be more raised. Do you want to talk about the partners, Gerard?
Yeah, and uh, just to kind of touch back on, on the referendum and funding, I mean, we've got a lot of people, well, it was a ten-point vote in favor of doing that. But if you're looking at all the surrounding townships, those people as well are really willing to give to the project. Under extraordinary women, I'd have to take a look at all the addresses, but we have all the surrounding townships have been giving. We have people up north giving, we have people from out of state who've given. So it's, it's got a lot of support. And when we say potential partners, we've been working with a number of people. We have a, a committee that's been working on capital campaign planning. Uh, the library board just had a meeting with Community Health Foundation, Greater Wharton last night. Now, we're asking for two point five for the city. Uh, financial institutions within Lake Mills have been very supportive so far. Nobody's cut a check yet, but same with the community foundation, the surrounding municipalities and a lot of it is just waiting. Because there's, nobody wants to really step up and give until the city actually commits to it. And programming improvements, um, uh, Michelle and I were going over the slideshow earlier and I was trying to think about how to talk about this is that, I mean, we have a lot of programs now. And I've been, Becca, the children's librarian, and I, I've talked to her, well, what can we do with more space? Because it's still just her at forty hours a week. And she's already doing a lot, but there are a number of things that we'd be able to do with the added space. Uh, for instance, playgroups, we don't have, if you see the picture there now, that's the upstairs room with the stage. If we have more space, it'd be a lot easier to be able to schedule in just regular playgroups. Uh, dropping groups, just peer groups from parent to parent to come in and use the space. We'd be able to add additional storytimes. Uh, right now we have the toddler's storytime, which fills the room. Uh, we get up to twenty to thirty kids in there, plus the adults that are coming with them. It gets very crowded. And one thing that Becca said is that instead of having just the Fridays, she'd be able to have one on a Tuesday or Wednesday or whenever she decides and then just repeat that later in the week. Uh, creative play spaces is something that's been recognized more and more as important just for uh, child development. We'd be able to have some dedicated spaces to that. Um, a few years ago, twenty nineteen, when we were first starting this whole process and we were interviewing and looking at different architectural firms, we, we did our due process and a part of that was I visited other libraries and for instance, down in Milton, they had a renovation, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago, whatever it was, but they were able to get sponsorships to have different creative playspaces. Creative play spaces within the library. So they have one from Culvers and they have one from like a, a tractor implement dealer. And like the Culvers, they, they put on the uh, the vests, the aprons, they count out play money. They have the little toys and they serve each other food. All those things are, and I remember when my kids were in first and second grade, that was the most popular spot in the uh, elementary school classroom was the creative play.
Let's go on to the next slide, Gerard, we're kind of running short on time.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
It's all good. Um, so the, the budget here shows um, the breakdown of where monies are potentially going to be coming from. These are hopeful numbers. Um, and I think it's important to acknowledge that the one point five is in the capital campaign. But the capital campaign is not going to be necessarily a go if we don't promise to borrow two point five. Um, and the two point.
Yeah, these are all, all potential numbers, yeah.
Yes.
Bowls.
And I recognize that one-third of that is the other potential donors and that one point five and two point five add up to four, um, from the city. But um, there was some, there were some numbers put out there as far as how much of an impact this would make on a tax owner, or I'm sorry, a ho- homeowner and I think it was three hundred and seventy-five thousand was the normal. Um, it's eighty-two dollars a year, which breaks down to six dollars and sixty-seven cents a month, which is less, to go back to Culvers, is less than a butter burger from Culvers.
Right, uh, for a home value of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, yes.
Mary, what's your question?
May I ask a clarifying question about this planned budget? Um, if you look at this particular set of objectives that you've laid out, the city really is being asked to contribute one point eight million. Because you will have covered two point seven of the four point five. And so if you add up all the pies in the chart, you would be asking one point eight million of the city to fill in the void outside of your capital campaign, Greater Water Town. So I'm, I'm, if I added all the pies up correctly, it's two point seven on the left and that would leave one point eight on the right to make it four point five. Did I do my math correctly?
Yeah, Michelle and I were talking about that earlier today. The pie chart is not quite where it should be as far as accuracy goes. Uh, when we were asking two point five from the city and we've got four hundred existing, uh, geez, uh, extraordinary women should be about another two hundred. Greater Wharton, I, I think we're still on a good chance to get a half billion from them. And then Lake Mills EMS was a hundred thousand dollars. I think the Lake Mills area community found, community foundation could do a multi-year pledge to probably about a hundred thousand dollars. And Drake had talked about that before, about how, what percentage that is, like something like eight. And the, the capital campaign, we want to raise as much as we can. The more we get, I mean, the more we can expand the plan and do more. Um, this is kind of more hopeful than.
And, and I want to recognize that this is not including any kind of uh, inflation. This is right. I recognize that. You just support, this is as planned budget. And so I am reading this as you as a board have planned to do a capital campaign of one and a half to achieve the Lake Mills ACF, um, foundation at a hundred, you're at, you're hoping to get a, a Greater Water Town at five hundred, two hundred at the uh, one hundred, um, exceptional women.
Extraordinary.
For extraordinary women and then four hundred from your library funds. So the balance to achieve your budget is one point eight million. And so I'm just pointing out what you are presenting to us is a one point eight million dollar ask. Because the balance is what you are working to achieve, but by other means. And I, so I want to, that's what you presented to us. So I just want to let you know that the, if we were to, if the city were to put forward two point five million, it would not, it would put you over the four and a half. And I think that's, I want to make sure we're clear on what the goal is and what you're being, what you're really trying to achieve. Because if, if you're just asking for more money and then you're going to add more and more scope, I don't know that that's what we, the referendum asked our citizens about. And so I just want to really understand the money and the ask really clearly.
Yeah, I, I see what you mean.
Caught my attention as the place to start that conversation.
Yeah, I, I assume you mean it's like we're asking for, yeah, okay.
The part, pie chart.
We've always been very, very specific on keeping to the four point five million dollar budget. Um, that's why the plan has had to change over the years. I mean, we started out with that thirteen million. Then we slowly had to cut back, cut back, cut back, cut back, cut back. And four point five is what we're sitting at. Uh, my hope would that be that the uh, the capital campaign is very successful. And as far as the total borrowing amount that the city would do or the city would spend, I, I would need more help with that from Drake and Sam on how that would be handled. I mean, if we are staying at four point five total and the library capital campaign fund went great and raised like three million dollars, you would expect that the city would be paying a lot less, yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's a few options. The, the money that gets donated to the campal, capital campaign will be the, under the sole authority of the library board to decide how it's spent. Um, the library board could choose um, to use those funds to assist the city in paying principal and interest payments on a two point five million dollar loan that it takes out. Uh, most likely the city's money is going to have to be the first money spent, the first dollar spent because um, a lot of the capital campaign is going to be pledges over a certain amount of years. So um, not all of that may be available immediately. I will say the Greater Water Town Health Foundation came to the library board last night and they indicated that their initial analysis of the library board's bu- budget was that it was three hundred thousand dollars short because of inflationary considerations in twenty twenty-seven. So that four point five is probably at least four point eight in twenty twenty-seven dollars.
Yes.
Yeah, the referendum question asked for up to two point five million dollars. So it's at an upper limit on the council's um, contribution. Um, that is advisory only. The city can ultimately choose to borrow and support the, the project at whatever level it would, it would like. Um, there are, um, within the draft budget that FEH has prepared, there are certain add-ons that could be done to add, add space. Um, one that I believe is still listed as an optional add-on is there's an outdoor courtyard that could be enclosed to add more interior space. It exists currently. Um, it's just kind of a notch out of the building. Um, you can kind of see it on the, on the first floor, floor plan, I believe.
I think that was an additional three hundred thousand to do though.
Right. So what I'm saying is that there are, there are options for if the capital campaign exceeded itself to increase scope of projects. Um, I think that in talking with the library board's consultant on fundraising, um, they're very confident in the one million dollar number. Anything above the one million dollar in borrowing is um, is what they're targeting to do more than a million, but they're very confident in the one million dollar, um, borrow, uh, I'm sorry, contribution from the capital campaign. So I think the numbers are, are somewhat in improvement. Um, increase in scope to this project, um, improvements that were considered but were dropped because of budgetary considerations. Um, I think there's a whole, you have many options before you as far as how the council wants to structure its support uh, of the project if it chooses to.
Yeah, there's a number of things that have been put off uh, in expectation of this. Um, just mentioning how there's other things building-wise that can be spent if we do do really well in the capital campaign.
Um, I see that Robin is here. Did, is, can I suspend the rules to allow her to speak?
Are you done with the presentation that I was waiting for?
There's one more slide, I think, right Gerard? That was the last slide? Oh, yeah, there.
That was the last one.
Thank you. Yeah, sounds good. Um, yeah, I did see that Robin Unst was here and she had registered to speak earlier. If there's no objections, like we can recognize her and, and give her uh, an opportunity to speak if you still want to, Robin, or you don't have to.
I apologize I was late. I was literally elbow deep in Civil War archives that I pulled from the library to do a project with. So um, it's kind of a recap of what Gerard and Michelle have spoken on this, this last time period here. Um, I'm Robin Unst. For those who don't know me, I'm on the library board. I'm also on the campaign planning committee um, for the library expansion project. Um, and as they were saying, over the last several months and even years, we've been working on this diligently um, to develop a thoughtful capital improvement campaign um, in plan for expanding our library. Throughout the process, you know, we've had to make a lot of really tough decisions. Um, sometimes it's included pivoting on the design, um, idea, um, fine tuning our focus, identifying and caring forward what priorities we want to focus on. Um, some, you know, setting a realistic budget and that's where that four and a half billion came in. Um, identifying the core needs that the project must meet or address in order to uh, be successful in what we're trying to accomplish here. Throughout the careful evaluation and understanding of our budget, um, the library board determined that one of our most urgent priorities was definitely the children's programming and the space to support it. Our current facility simply doesn't meet those needs, um, as identified as they mentioned in the facility assessment that was done when we started this. Um, particularly for the early literacy activities, creative play, teen engagement, tutoring and small group programming. If you've attended any of the children's summer programs, um, you will likely see firsthand how constrained the space was, as they had pointed out. Um, the families, you know, that we serve, it, it just aren't, serve it very well with the limited space that we have. And we're probably missing out on opportunities for additional programming because of that limited space and we're a growing community. Um, so we really are at a critical point with this campaign and getting your guys' support. Um, and the two and a half million, uh, Mary, to address the question you had, that has always been the board's intent of asking um, of the, the council in order to support this. Um, I don't think it's ever been a balance of what we could raise versus, you know, what the remaining cost would be. It's always been, we've been focused on that two and a half million. Um, Drake had some fantastic ideas of how that could be worked with. Um, so this commitment um, by the resolution really is sort of a tipping point for the board in order to move forward with this. We have other donors and organizations that we're going to be making requests to that are really waiting for the city's leadership on this and the commitment um, in order to move forward with this. So hopefully with your support, we can see this happen real soon. And my understanding after talking to Jody, our campaign consultant, that we really do need to have a commitment by August um, in order to start meeting some of the other deadlines of these other organizations, especially for grants, so you're aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Michelle and Gerard for the presentation. So, um, we don't have a prepared resolution tonight. I think it would be appropriate for us to discuss the, the request. And uh, if we want to, um, you know, ask to have to prepare a resolution for a future meeting, that might be a good um, next step. So are there any questions for Michelle and Gerard or discussion? Greg?
Yeah, um, thank you for solidifying the proposal a little bit more here tonight. Appreciate that. Uh, in the presentation, I noticed that we took a lot of the things that were in the basement and that were upstairs and added those to the main floor. I was wondering how we're now going to use the basement and the upstairs area.
Uh, current plan that we've been working on uh, would be to have that for the friends of the library, for library storage and also for the uh, historical society. We've got a number of files and materials in the historical society. Right now, the friends of the library, as they've mentioned many times before, they have a little rollout cart for all their stuff. And we'd like to give them space to do the kind of work that they do. They do a lot to support the library. Uh, our storage is uh, packed full for our library materials. We'll be able to use a lower level for that as well. Original plans were to actually remodel that basement area, that wouldn't happen. Not until, not unless we would raise more money or to do uh, another change down the line. Pretty much all the money we'd be spending on would be just to the one-story expansion. And, and the second floor would continue to be meeting space. We wouldn't repurpose that, uh, at least not that we've talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Mary?
Well, I think it is important for the city to support the library's efforts in some way. I am feeling as if the timing is challenging in that we, I, I am a bit nervous about the word vision on a slide when we're being asked to put forward two and a half million dollars for a vision of expansion. Our citizens voted fifty-five percent to support, was it fifty-five, fif- fifty-five percent? To support, and I would say fifty-five percent of the overall bill. So the two and a half out of the four and a half million was about a fifty-five percent spend on a particular set of requirements that were shared back, um, and I guess it was Ben. on a particular set of requirements that were shared back in, I guess it was in January of '24. And so, we're back to repositioning and assessing, and I am not confident that I understand what is the same, what is different. We're talking 150% bigger, and this is moving here, and I don't know, I'm not feeling confident I understand what we're getting for our investment in the library specifically. So, more on, like, the apples to apples regarding the children's space. So, what is it we're getting and what are we not getting, or that will possibly be different than when our citizens said go? I think that clarity is really important. The second, the second piece that I feel like I am missing, and that our citizens, when they vote on, voted on this in the referendum, is single stimulus. So, we didn't, we have the capital improvement plan coming up pretty soon, and I think it's important to see what else we're layering on in the same time period to understand the impact to, the big-picture impact with multiple items. And so, I, I think that is a part that is important, those two aspects, really understanding. And I don't mean, I mean a plan. It doesn't have to be what color the carpet is. That's not what I'm asking. But a plan more specific than, this is now moving from May, was two-story, now we're looking at a one-story with possible projected savings and milling. It, to me, is still not concrete. And so, having a formal commitment to an exact amount is, I think the timing, to me, is challenging, recognizing we want to try to make August. So, some things are close, but maybe not close enough. And so, I, I am in a supporting position. I think no more than 55% of the total bill, up to two and a half million, no more than four and a half all-in. I mean, there are some things where I feel would be something of interest that I would like us to, like, think about or talk about regarding how to get to that number. Because that's what the referendum kind of, how it was positioned, two and a half out of the four and a half. And I think there's some operations costs that I'm still not certain. Back in January, we talked about maybe one more FTE. There was a question of is that 30% more? It could be the part-time moving full-time. And so, there's an operations piece. So, is that a 50%, like, a match with the rest of the fundraising? And then a 5% holdout for operations? I'm just trying to think through the dollars as a whole so that we're kind of making sure that it's transparent and yet aligned with the four and a half million dollar ask, the budget, keeping us on the budget side of things. So, that was a lot in one ramble, but that's kind of my thought process. I do feel strongly the city should support in some way. That's just, I want to state that. It's just the amount and how to position that, that it's balancing what our citizens want, plus also what's coming next for them is the picture I'm trying to kind of pull together in my head.
So, can I respond to that?
Yeah, please.
Okay. As far as the word vision, I don't want to get caught up in semantics, but I thought it was a better word than plan. But that's me, because I was big on semantics, and I decided to go with vision. It sounded prettier. Do you want to speak to the single stimulus, Drake?
To the what?
Single stimulus is what you said.
I don't know. I don't know what you're asking.
So, my, so, single stimulus meaning, when, and this is just the nature of how we have to ask, that when we asked about the referendum for two and a half, at two and a half million in 2027, and our citizens voted, but the citizens don't know that also in 2027, it's likely we will have a Sandy Beach effort and/or a something else in the CIP that will also add to the borrow base. And so, I would think transparency on what might be coming forward is something I think is important. And so, that's what I feel is, I'm missing to know, is there, if we would say two, two and a half million or two million, is there another two million or one and a half that's coming on something else? I just think that is a big-picture question moving out.
I think the, our referendum requirement is a local requirement that leaves a lot to be desired when you're asking. The only information you get is the question that's put before them.
Yep.
There is no method, no, no real way for us to put forward a referendum question that lists the entire capital improvement plan and then asks them, you know, to rank. In most communities, there would be no referendum on a question like this. It's a local requirement that we put forward. It's not binding. It's advisory. It's, it was created 20, 25 years ago. It's at $500,000. It's been $500,000 since that ordinance was created. It's inconsistent as to when you need to ask, right? Utility projects are exempted. You could spend $10 million on a Sandy Beach redevelopment of the Mobile Home Park and not have to go to referendum for it. So, you know, that, that is the answer to the question. You only have the answer to the question that was asked. You do not have, you, we don't have information beyond our typical budgeting process, our typical capital improvement process, which does provide public hearings and opportunities for people to speak on the entirety of our, essentially of our financial picture. Certainly for the coming year, and then also there's the, there is a five-year lookout at the very least. And so, I guess that would be the opportunity for people to say, to come back and say, well, if I had known there was going to be X, Y, and Z in 2027 in addition to this project, my vote may have been different. That's really the only opportunity we'd have.
And if I can clarify, I wasn't, I'm not implying that we should have asked the citizens, have, the citizens have a multi-layer. I think it's important as a governing body that we understand. And so, I, that's where I'm at. I think it's, it's, I think, for me, to make a decision to say, well, how are we impacting our citizens' pocketbooks when it comes to our borrow? I, I think it's a, it's a picture that I feel is important for me to understand what the ands are, not that we would in a, in a referendum have added a CIP element. I, I think it's a, it's a decision point for me.
Yeah.
So, I didn't mean to take us down the route of the referendum process itself. I appreciate.
The referendum is one data point.
It is one data point, but we are, we have, you know, the lens and the decision-making on the CIP, and this is, this is a part, this is as a part of it. And so, I think those and things are important for me to understand, to understand to the magnitude how this impacts the overall as one of several things. That's where I'm at.
So, okay. I was going to say, you know, in, in hearing your, your thoughts, I apologize because I guess when I made the PowerPoint, I didn't, I thought I gave enough historical perspective, but I didn't give enough historical perspective of the process of which we have gone through since 2019. And, and so, you know, six years has gone by where there's been an inordinate amount of work to be able to collect feedback from, from, from people within Lake Mills and around Lake Mills. I mean, there was an entire community group that worked together and looked at different options and decided on the two-story option. When was that, Gerard? Is it 2021? Oh, you're muted, bud.
2020. We went through that process. Well, late 2019, we went through that process, looking at all the different options that were available.
So, you would say that basically we have collected, right, Gerard, we've collected quite a bit of feedback to be making these decisions and that we've had to, as Robin put it, cut back, cut back, cut back, cut back over the course of six years. Now to the point where, yep, only, I think it was the last couple of months, we, we acknowledged that there was no way we could do two stories. So, we reached out to FEH and said, hey, we can't do two stories. We have to do one. And every single time we request of work from them, we're paying them. I put my foot down and I said, we're not paying them anymore. So, to ask, or to answer your questions, Mary, I really, I want to emphasize that the work has been done. And it's almost tiring now at this point where we're like, okay, we are, we're asking for this. We got the referendum that said, yep, we're good to go. The community supports it. I have pointed out that it's really, just boils down to $6.67 per month. It's, it's not a huge impact over the course of 20 years. And all of the work that was done unfortunately came to a stop when we had to realize that this is, we needed to cut it back to one story. So, the, the plan that we have right now for one story is the plan that we have. And that, and the services that are enveloped into that plan are spent for kids and teens, more than any other population. The adults benefit because they're going to be in a separate part of the library, but ultimately, all of the work that you're saying that we should do, we should come up with, we should have, we've done. So, you, you probably didn't know that, and that's my apologies because I didn't put that in the presentation. I think it was long enough. But the point is, I, I think it's important that we know that that money, yep, in maybe a year or so, we might be looking at spending another two and a half million for Sandy Beach, which is part of living here. And like he said, you know, not every time that we spend money that we have to ask the public's input. We have asked the public's input for the library for many years, and I think it's time that we give it to them.
So, I think I saw Mr. Koots maybe wants to say something. You turned your mic on? Yes, no?
So, is there a finalized floor plan?
Yeah, you saw it.
Yeah.
That's it.
We can send it, we can send the, a blown-up version of it. It's not within the presentation. It didn't, its clarity was, wasn't as good as we would have liked on there. But we can, we can send that out, but it is a, that expansion into the parking lot, into the parking lot area is the single, single-story expansion that the library board settled on to build their budget around and then make their request on. The library board has not, to date, made a request for additional staffing. I will say that absent the expansion project, I have had discussions with Gerard about their staffing model and about the potential need for additional staffing. So, I think the single story, based on what I heard from the library board last night at their, the meeting that they had, the single story reduces some of the immediate need for additional staffing because lines of sight and the, the operations are not spread across two floors. But I would anticipate that at the very least sometime over the next five years, we would be looking at taking at least one of their current .7s, .75s, and bringing it up to a full-time FTE status. Right now, they are at two full-time employees. Gerard and the children's librarian are full-time. There are two that are .7 or .75. So, there's two at 30 hours a week, one at 20 hours a week, and two at .15. So, what is that? 10 to 15 hours a week? And then they have their, the library pages, the temporary part-time employees as well. And so, that, their staffing has been discussed outside of the expansion project, but the library board has not made a request during the budgeting process for an increase in staffing. And I think that's been true for many, many years.
So, I'd like to make a few comments and then maybe make a suggestion for how we can move forward and wrap up this item. First of all, I want to recognize we have a number of members of the library board, Friends of the Library, people who are active on the fundraising committees here tonight. So, thank you all for all your work on this. And I agree, Michelle, it's been a very long time, and I can definitely appreciate that members of the library board in particular are, you know, fatigued by this and rising costs and then still trying to achieve certain goals is just a constant challenge, I'm sure. I appreciate the issues that Mary raised, and I think what I heard you saying, Mary, is really just that with respect to the 2.5 million, you know, when we put that out for referendum, we had a two-floor plan. And that's what people thought it was going to be, and that, you know, informed their vote. Now, you've had to scale back, so it's a one-floor plan, and as Greg suggested, you know, can, can we see that? I think it just would be helpful for just to get, for us to all make sure we understand, you know, what had to be scaled down and kind of what's the new, what's the new layout. I, I too feel very strongly that the city should support this, should make a significant commitment to this. The city owns the building. But the library board, as was pointed out, is its, is a separate entity, and the library serves a broader community than just the city. So, it's always an interesting interplay between all of those. But I, I guess what I would suggest is that we ask staff to prepare a resolution that would be in support of the city making the commitment of up to $2.5 million for 2027. I, I do like the idea that it's planned, you know, that there's a year with it because I think that's been a little bit in flux. If there are council members that have thoughts now for a condition that they would want to include, we could ask the staff to include that, or we could discuss that when the resolution, you know, comes before us. But I think really that's the next step. We can't, we don't have a resolution before us tonight, so I think we would want to get that. Mary, as you were talking about other expenses and borrowing and capital improvement that we might have, I guess maybe question and then a comment. Drake, when would we typically see the CIP that would go to Public Works Board this month and then would come to, sorry, next month?
Yeah, Public Works Board in August and then September to the city council is our typical schedule.
So, we wouldn't see that until September? We wouldn't see that the second meeting in August?
Not typically, no, but we can try.
Well, I just wondered if, just to address some of Mary's questions, if it would be helpful to, you know, see what that larger picture is when, when we're adopting this resolution, but I'm recognizing, you know, a time sensitivity that if a capital campaign is going to be raising a million and a half dollars, then they need that commitment from the city to help support that. And if we want to construct in 2027, we can't, have to keep moving.
Yeah, I mean, if there's limited changes by the Public Works Board, that increases the likelihood we could bring it to you in the second meeting in August. We can certainly make that our goal. The CIP gets approved, and ultimately, the following year's capital budget gets approved in the capital budgeting process. So, regard, I mean, you'll be passing, you'll be making some, some level of commitment with a resolution, and then there still is the approval in the 20, at the end of 2026 for the 2027 borrowing. So, the resolution is basically just your direction, you can call it an order, to staff to include that, to ensure that that is included in the 2027 capital budget. And it would certainly be a direction, I mean, the Public Works Board wouldn't grapple with this project anyway. They only look at the project specific to their, to their purview, their jurisdiction. And so, that's the function that it would take. Once the council approves a resolution, that ensures that it exists in the CIP and ultimately in the recommended budget that my office will put out in 2026 for the 2027 budget.
Okay, so with that information, Greg?
I, I think we're close. I'm supportive. I think it's time for the library to, to upgrade and have some changes here. I want to be equitable with the, with the city funding. And when I say we're close, I guess I'm looking at kind of a matching, is my thought, and the capital would put up half, the city would put up half. 4.5 is the number. The city's putting up 2.25. It's kind of my thought, and the capital funds would be 2.25. Are we close enough to put something like that together? And I'm one member of council. There's four other people here, but that's kind of where I'm coming from.
My only concern with that is inflation. With the costs of things going up and continuously going up, even if we were to say 2.25, what that's worth now, what that's worth in 2024. in 2027 are two different things.
So matching with a limit of two-point-five.
Let me propose this in the interest of time because we do have quite a few other items on our agenda tonight. Um, the library board has made a request for two-point-five million. So, uh, can we ask staff to draft a resolution with that number that they've requested, and then we can debate it when the resolution comes to us?
Yes.
Whether people be comfortable with that, and we can amend it or discuss further, um, what the number is, or any conditions or matching or whatever that we might, uh, want to talk about.
Apologies for how long the presentation took, everyone. I wasn't expecting it to go quite that long. So I appreciate your patience. Gerard as well.
Thank you, and, thank you, Ger- Gerard. Hope you're feeling better soon. Okay, is that, are we, uh, is that, is that sufficient, uh, Drake, for direction for staff? Okay, thank you. Right, if there are no objections, I, I would, objections, I would like to move up item E, which is the intergovernmental agreement with the town of Waterloo, because I know we have a number of people here in the audience that are here for that, um, item. Um, so if we could, any objections to that?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so Misty would like to move to resolution twenty-five dash thirty-nine, if you could read that for us.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash thirty-nine, resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Lake Mills and the town of Waterloo for the provision of emergency medical services.
I move to approve City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash thirty-nine, uh, approving the intergovernmental, governmental agreement by and between the city of Lake Mills and the town of Waterloo for emergency medical services.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Quednow, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Uh, Drake?
Uh, this is an IGA that's in the same template form as ones you've approved in the past. This is a section of the town of Waterloo, which was previously covered by, um, uh, the former boundary, which was served by Lake Mills EMS. It is currently served by the Lake Mills Fire Department as part of the Fire District. There is a letter, uh, included in your packet from Ryan Brothers indicating that it is, in their professional opinion, that there is capacity in order to serve this area. Um, both Chief Russ and our service director, Cody Lutson, are here to answer any questions, uh, you may have. This did come as a request from, um, the, uh, town board, um, to provide a, a, an option to them to consider. This is our standard agreement. Um, it does include the updated, uh, pricing, and it follows the same, um, arrangement that the other townships that we've contracted with for EMS service, um, have agreed to as well.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just have one question. Um, on a percentage basis, the two-hundred-and-two, uh, new citizens that will be covered is what percent? I'm guessing it's very small based on our total percent.
Yeah.
Like, it seems.
We're probably close to eleven thousand, eleven thousand.
Thank you, that's all I need to know. Oh, yeah, thanks.
Thousand total.
Yep, thank you.
Any questions for Chief Russ or Mr. Lutson? Um, I'll, I'll just comment. I'm generally in support of this, and I, I think there was a, a comment in one of the memos that it, uh, it's nice to have alignment with the Fire District and the EMS, and that seems to be working well in the other territories that we have. So this would continue that and just make communication easier. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote on Resolution Twenty-five dash thirty-nine?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. So going back up to where we left off on the agenda, um, letter B is a private well operator license application for Lake Mills Gulf. Anything from staff?
It's an annual approval. Um, staff recommends approval.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve private well operating license application for Lake Mills Gulf.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quednow. Any discussion? Uh, just a quick question. I'll assume, I know all the private well permits have to do monitoring and pass safe, safe drinking water tests, so they've met all those requirements?
They, they, yes, in order to be eligible for the private well operator license, they have to pass any DNR mandated testing. Um, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing no other discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please, on the private well operator license application for Lake Mills Gulf?
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Next item is a public hearing on the Jefferson County Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2025 to 2029. Uh, the, the public hearing has been duly published. We have an affidavit of publication in our packet. So I'll open this public hearing, and I'll ask staff to just give a brief summary before we open for public comment.
Sure. Um, the Jefferson County Hazard Mitigation Plan had been expiring, uh, and they, they're required to be updated, um, in order to be eligible essentially for, uh, federal funds in the, in the event that an emergency declaration has been made. Um, as part of that, municipalities are offered the opportunity to participate in the development of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, both myself and Trif Schroeder at different times participated in, um, conversations and survey responses in the development of the plan. Uh, the plan was adopted by Jefferson County. Um, each municipality is, um, required to adopt. Um, absent adoption, uh, we would not be, um, covered under the Hazard Mitigation Plan and would therefore be ineligible for, um, what are currently FEMA funds if an emergency declaration, um, was made and we incurred damages. Uh, so staff does recommend approval, um, so that we are covered under the county's Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. So we are in public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to make comment on the Jefferson County Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2025 to 2029? I am not seeing anyone in the room and, nor anyone online. Last call, is there anyone who would like to make public comment on the Hazard Mitigation Plan? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I will move on to Resolution Twenty-five dash thirty-eight. Misty, would you read that title?
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash thirty-eight, a resolution adopting the Jefferson County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, 2025 through 2029.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Twenty-five dash thirty-eight, adoption of Jefferson County Hazard Mitigation Plan, 2025 to 2029.
Mr. Koots will second.
Motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Mr. Koots. Is there any questions or discussion?
Craig Waters.
So I haven't had time to review this two-hundred-and-forty-page document in depth, and I don't feel comfortable as a representative of the community voting for this until I have time to review it. Is there a problem with delaying this to our next meeting?
Uh, they would, Misty, can you remind me when the county requested approval? Um, it's, there's a date, a date in August, early August.
Yes, there was a date in early August. I don't have the letter in front of me with the exact date, but they, I, I want to say it was maybe August 5th. They were hoping to have a response by?
It was enough that, um, the, 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 the public hearing notice needed to go out very, very quickly after we received the message from Jefferson County for adoption on the date by which they would, um, like to approve, um, have it adopted. I will note that you can't really change it. It's the county's plan. Um, so your choice is really to adopt or not adopt what the county has adopted. Um, not adopting it would leave us, I believe, um, exposed to potential costs that would otherwise be shared through, um, federal funds. Um, so I, I think that while we are required to adopt it, our ability to, um, amend it is limited to none.
I'd just like to comment. I, I did read through it and also kind of, um, did a word search for Lake Mills to see where, um, things stuck out for our city in particular. There's a lot of data, a lot of appendices, a lot of information that's obviously pulled together for the county to identify, uh, areas where, where there are potential hazards and to come up with, you know, recommendations for moving forward. And, uh, much of the mitigation plan recommendations from what I read are unchanged from the previous plan. Uh, there was, there are, uh, specific items for, um, each municipality to work on, and there was one that was updated for Lake Mills dealing with, uh, uh, tornado shelters at mobile home, um, communities, which I thought was interesting that, uh, we have the most
Mobile homes.
Of any municipality in the county. So, um, I, I feel confident in the work that Drake and, um, Chief Schroeder have contributed to this and seeing the updates and, you know, understanding the work that the county does to, um, pull all this data together. So I'm, I'm comfortable voting on it tonight.
Yeah, I ju- I just had one question. I, first of all, I, I did the same, noted the same, um, volume of actions that every municipality has to make, but specifically looking at Lake Mills. And there are a lot, and I'm curious to know, do you have an accountability to report back on your progress in the twenty-five to twenty-nine timeframe on the activities that are noted as a part of the implementation plan?
No.
Okay.
Um, they will, the next time they go through the update, they'll ask for what was accomplished. Is it still a need?
Okay.
And then that will determine whether it is, remains in the plan going forward. But no, we don't have to report on
Okay.
Um, what was accomplished throughout the term of the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Because it was very comprehensive. I mean, a lot of every peril, you know, every kind of national, natural disaster kind of concept. There's a lot, and I would think the amount of time it will take to address some of these could be extensive. So it's good to note you need to make progress, but it's not a reporting requirement, per se, of like, that you don't have deadlines due on any of those. Okay.
And they, it's potent, when they're listed, there may be potential for grant funding if grant programs are created. Um, and so it's attempted to be as comprehensive as possible.
Lot of work. Craig?
So how long was the process to put this together?
Um, this one went very quickly. Um, I believe I was first contacted about it in the first part of 2024. Um, it had, there was a, a transition in the emergency director position at the county, and it had started under the, under the previous director, and then there was kind of a lull, and then it was picked back up after the new director was in, was in place. And so I think it, the, the formal process started in earnest in the first quarter, maybe early second quarter of 2024, um, in order to ensure that the county was not uncovered by the time that its previous mitigation plan expired. Thank you.
Any further discussion, comments? Okay, seeing none, uh, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution Twenty-five dash thirty-eight?
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Obscene.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is, uh, F is Resolution Twenty-five dash forty. Misty, would you read that for us, please?
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash forty, amending impact fees.
Drake or Sam do want to just give us a brief overview?
Sure. Um, our ordinances require the impact fees to be amended, to be amended annually. Um, they ha- to go up by the Consumer Price Index. The resolution before you increases for the wastewater and the park impact fees. Uh, staff is recommending holding the water impact fee as, um, as it currently sits. The, uh, needs assess, the projects identified and the needs assessment have been, uh, fulfilled, and so there are currently, um, no projects for which we can, uh, those funds are eligible to be spent on. Um, we are in the process of updating that needs assessment, so once that's complete, that will, um, would come before you if needs are identified and need to be approved. That's a statutory requirement, uh, for the use of impact fees. Um, and essentially, it identifies, uh, projects and needs that are attributable to new growth, um, that you're collecting that impact fee from in order to continue to serve that, um, and improve the system attributable to the, the growth that has come in. And so, uh, we will be updating, we're looking at that needs assessment, updating that needs assessment. Um, and at that point, there may be recommendations on, um, what the, the, um, impact fee should be or, uh, and whether it should be amended at that time. But at this point, we, uh, recommend proceeding with the park and wastewater impact fees increased by CPI, but, um, exempting the water, um, impact fee from the increase this year.
Any questions, comments? Um, I have a question. So the, um, park impact fees, I think, well, like, the park needs assessment, I think we're aware that, um, from a previous development that we approved a few months back, that all of those, um, issues have largely been addressed. So that one, uh, the parks is also definitely in need of an update. Was, when you talked about updating the needs assessment, were you talking about all three or just the water?
One we're currently working on is water. Um, we are, we are taking a look at parks. The Parks Board will start the corp, which is a different document, but they often have some overlap on it. Um, but we will be looking at updating the park impact fee as well as the ordinance. Um, the, uh, ordinance inclu- was very specific, and the, and the needs assessment typically is, is not so. Um, so there are, we're, we're confident that there are park needs, um, that are attributable to growth, um, and previous needs, there's projects identified certainly in the, in the corp. Um, the last needs assessment, um, is from a number of years ago, so yes, we are also looking at that. But the park impact fee is not as high as the water impact fee is. Um, and, um, as a staff, we know that there are park projects that we believe will be eligible for, um, an impact fee once we update it. Um, so we were comfortable recommending proceeding with the CPI increase on that impact fee rather than the water.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash forty, amending impact fees.
Mr. Koots will second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Koots. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution Twenty-five dash forty?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Next item is Ordinance Twelve-seventy-seven. Uh, this is the first reading for that tonight. So Misty, would you please do that first reading for us?
Ordinance Twelve-seventy-seven, an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Um, anything staff wants to share tonight or?
It's for a future location, near future location of the school district's bus barn. Uh, staff does believe the annexation is in the best interest of the city. Um, I would recommend waiving the readings and approving the ordinance tonight, but it's the prerogative of the city council. The school district, um, would like to move forward with moving dirt and beginning on that project as soon as possible. Um, so I think they would prefer to avoid a, a month, a month and a half yet from being able to, to start. Uh, and Troy cannot issue even an early start permit to them until it has been, um, annexed into the city. He would, he would have to, because he would have to issue a permit under the town of Lake Mills, and that's not, they don't translate. So, um, we would recommend, yes?
Mr. Daley?
Yes?
We have not received, um, feedback from Department of Administration yet on their review.
Okay. Thank you, Misty. You can't go forward yet.
Sorry, Tanya. Maybe next time.
Can we, can we still call this the first reading?
Yes.
Uh, I suppose we could have a motion to waive the second reading and proceed with the third reading when the application's complete, but, um...
I would just wait until
Just wait until next meeting.
DOA. I thought we had had it already.
Okay, sounds good.
Where's Oasis Lane? Is that north side?
Yes.
Across the interstate?
Yeah, just north of the trailer park, just south of the hotel.
Yeah, south of the hotel and truck stop.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so we'll have that on our next meeting agenda. Next item is Ordinance Twelve-seventy-eight. Again, a first reading, so Misty, would you read that one for us? a first reading, so Misty, would you read that one for us?
Ordinance 1278, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 615-14 Parking Time Limitations, Section 615-15 No Parking Zones, and Section 615-16 School Parking Zones, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you, staff.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, the ordinance, the, uh, impetus for the ordinance was the, the next item, the authorization, authorizing sharrows on Madison Street that ultimately came with a re, a recommendation from the Public Works Board. Uh, because it was coming for you, um, the, uh, police chief also brought some areas forward, um, requesting that they be included in the ordinance amendment. So it is a, a bit broader than it would be if it was just dealing with the sharrows on Madison Street and that is the reason for that. Um, the, the, well, we can talk about it when we get to authorizing of sharrows on Madison Street. Um, this is a bit of a chicken of a, chicken and an egg in that you probably aren't going to authorize sharrows if you don't approve the ordinance. And so, um, you'll have to decide whether you want to table, uh, that resolution until you get to the third reading of the ordinance or if you want to, uh, approve it in advance, but you'd have to be under the understanding that the measurements don't work out if, uh, the parking, some of the parking is not eliminated on Madison Street as the ordinance, um, lays out.
Could we waive?
You can.
To expedite the process?
Always can, yes. It's City Council prerogative to waive readings.
Except for the last ordinance. Got it. So I move to waive, um.
Uh, we don't have a motion to approve yet, right?
I'd pause just for one more second as well. Um, our ordinances do require a sponsor, a sponsor of this ordinance. It was only prepared late last week in preparation for this meeting, so I didn't discuss with anyone, uh, regarding sponsorship of the ordinance. Uh, I, I would like to amend to include that information if anyone wants to sponsor this ordinance.
I'll sponsor it. Okay, Michelle Quednow has, um, offered to sponsor Ordinance 1278. So we've had the first reading tonight. Um, I, I guess one thing I'd like to ask a question about and this will go in, you know, into the next item, uh, well, two things. One, comment, it looks like some of the, um, changes in the ordinance are really just putting precise addresses on places that previously said Sentry or, you know, like named a business that may or may not be there. So I think those are, are perfectly appropriate. It, are the changes on Madison Street the only, like, true changes?
Yes.
In parking allowance and the others are more just editorial?
Yes, there, I think there, you could, you could consider one change, potential change, um, with regard to one of the parking lots. One of the parking lots is, is, uh, posted as, um, forty-eight hours and in the ordinance right now, it just says a section of that must be forty-eight hours. So we reterm that as the whole thing because, um, that is what's currently posted and enforced. Other than that, you're exactly on point. It's largely, um, like placemaking rather than referring to the library or a fire hydrant in front of the library or Sentry or some specific building. We're referring to, um, a known spot, a lot line, an intersection, something like that, and then moving by feet linear in a, in one direction or another. And I, I went over that with Dwayne, so thanks.
Well, thank you for doing that. Um, I, I have observed regularly, um, parking on both sides of Madison Street close to Main Street. And so I, I, I do want to take a little bit more time to think about that piece of it. Um, so I, I personally would not be in favor of waiving all the readings tonight and, and voting on this tonight because I, you know, that is right in our downtown area. Um, and I just want to kind of get a better understanding about how the sharrows and the parking would, you know.
I will mention the painting could not occur until the street maintenance is complete and I don't believe we're looking at our street maintenance for this year being completed until September, perhaps early October. So you do have time. Um, uh, if you'd like, you also can move forward as you would please.
Well, and I, I'm just going to put it out there. Now that we have more information from Dan, I think it's fine for me to rescind the idea of, um, wa, waiving it.
Okay, so we've had the first reading and Michelle has, has volunteered to be the sponsor, so if there's no objections, we'll have this on neck, on the next agenda for a second reading.
I, I, I think this was already covered, but I would just like to add one more point because you brought it up, Ms. Curler. Um, the, the parking on, uh, Madison Street is, is kind of the onus of, of this change. Um, the Public Works Board did recommend sharrows on each side of the road, um, based on, it, it actually went back to the Public Works Board twice, but based on, um, measurements that were conducted by staff, there is no way to include sharrows with parking on both sides of the road. So that east, kind of north side of, um, Madison as it, as it exits the city limits to Pine Street is what's focused on here. Much of that already includes no parking. So this is really just kind of saying from Main Street to Pine Street on that east side of the road, there is no parking throughout.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we'll, um, move Ordinance 1278 to the next agenda. So then our next item is Rev, Resolution 25-41. Misty, would you read that for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-41, authorizing the painting of sharrows on Madison Street.
Thank you. Do we want to hear from staff first?
Um, there's, um, materials included in your packet. It goes through the presentation that was essentially delivered to the Public Works Board. Um, it did, we did evaluate, uh, at the Public Works Board request a number of different potential, um, bicycle infrastructure improvements on Madison Street because, um, we were doing maintenance on those, on those roads. Um, essentially because of the measurements, um, the, the, the recommendation was for sharrows, um, there, without the elimination of all parking, there really is no opportunity for other, um, infrastructure on there. At, I guess I'll say low-cost options. Obviously you could undertake a, a, a larger capital project and explore off-street, um, multi-use paths similar to like, you know, one, that's a Long American Way. If there was enough right-of-way, that's not something we evaluated because we were looking at what could be done on the existing pavement as the street is, is currently designed. Um, and it came back as that sharrows were the most, um, uh, the only viable solution while maintaining parking on one side of the street.
So procedurally, we need to, uh, make a motion and get it seconded, then we can waive?
Um,
Or postpone?
I think you can.
Yeah.
Or we can ask.
You can choose not to take any action and we can just bring it back. Um, if you'd like to put it on the table. I usually advise against tabling because tabling technically expires at a certain point and then it, it doesn't, you know, stay on the agenda. You can postpone to a date certain. Um, I believe you could make a motion to postpone to the date after which the ordinance has been adopted or, um.
Date of the third reading?
The date of the third reading. You could then say we're definitely bringing it back on that date, which would be August, the third Tuesday in August is when the third reading would, uh, be normally scheduled for. So if you wanted to make a motion, I would recommend a motion to postpone to, um, the third Tuesday in August.
Yes.
Yes, um, that date. Um, that's the formal way of doing it. I think you can also choose not to take action and we can place it on the agenda on it without a formal motion. So it's really how the council would like to, um, basically conduct its business on this matter.
Your presiding officer, are you okay with, uh, bringing it back up on August 19?
I'm fine to just not take any action tonight and have it, uh, brought back forward. I think if we say it goes with the third reading and then maybe somebody wants to waive a reading, then it, it, it maybe gets out of alignment, so.
So we'll plan to have it listed on the August 19th City Council Agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes council business for this evening. So our next item is announcements and recommendations for future agendas. So we have a couple of these ordinances. We have the Parks Board will be making their report on recreational amenities at Sandy Beach Park. And, um, anything else, Drake, that you want to alert us to?
Um, in August, we, we, we will be having a conversation on B level at Sandy, at this, for this, of the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park. Um, I'm not going to guarantee that it'll be there at the first meeting in August, but if we're ready, we, it will be. Um, I believe that's the only, um, no, uh, release of the financial, of the final financial guarantee letter of credit for, um, North Oak White slash White Oak Development that's on the south, on the south side of town, that apartment complex, uh, it's past its warranty period and, um, we'll be able to release that final letter of credit from the developer.
Okay. Any other announcements or recommendations from council members? Okay, seeing none. Uh, then our next agenda item is to convene into closed session to discuss real estate acquisition and or site development opportunities with, within tid number six for the City of Lake Mills pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session.
Move to, uh, convene into closed session?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quednow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's five zero, so we are, uh, going to move into closed session. When we reconvene, we will no longer be broadcasting on television, so this is the end of our broadcast this evening. Thank you.